I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Consider a motion to approve our agenda this morning.
Aye, so moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Sherri.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. We'll move on to our consent agenda. Consider a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you. It's your second.
Yes, Madam Chair, I'll second.
Thank you. Sherri, you call the roll, please.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. And then we're going to move on to our opportunity for public comment, but first, we have a new device that Sherri's going to be running, and it's a timer. I haven't tried using it yet, so bear with us. It'll be an experiment, make sure it works.
Yep.
So, opportunity for public comment. Anybody who wants to come up, they're going to be limited to five minutes. My understanding is that you'll have a green light, and then you'll have a yellow light when there's one minute left.
Yep.
And then red in your five minutes. So, we'll see how that goes. But if anyone wants to come up and address the board, come on up and state your name and address.
Betty Otten, 4678-7270, Third Street in T. I sent you all an email last night, and so I just want to bring that up that this morning, that on the agendas, there's been several past agendas where, even the one on today, that there's no author or owner. And I know that sometimes when Madam Chair goes to go to the next agenda item, she doesn't know who to turn it over to, so I'm wondering why that is not noted. And even the briefing forms don't contain any other information than just the title. And then I put the example in there from today, especially for number six and seven. And then number two is the swampland purchased before the defeated $50 million jail bond was on last November is back on the agenda again today with no owner assigned. So I just want to bring it up again, because I've brought it up several times in the past. Where does the settlement with David Tuntland sent as the county lost in court last June under Judge Pecus? And Mr. Tuntland spent over $70,000 on his own defense. This was absolutely shameful, and you need to do whatever's necessary to get this fixed. And then number three, who's responsible to fulfill the 75,000 cubic yards of dirt due to Lemmy per the purchase agreement in the T Jail land contract last year? Thank you in advance. Three minutes and 40 seconds.
Thank you. Anyone else want to come up? If not, we'll move on to the commissioner reports. Any commissioners have reports they'd like to make?
Madam Chair, I'd like to just recap that last Tuesday night, we did have our second redistricting meeting. This one was, of course, held at the Achievement Fairgrounds over in Lenox, and we had a nice turnout. We had three commissioners there. We also had a couple former commissioners. Senator Boland was there, a couple former auditors, and mostly important of all, we had a lot of general public there as well. So, a lot of good information, again, was shared, and I sure appreciated that, and I look forward to the ones that we have scheduled next week for T and the following week for Harrisburg, and then here in Canton for the last one. So, good information and good input by the public. It's nice to see the public having such an interest in Lincoln County government.
Thank you for that. Yeah, just for clarification, on November 30th at 6:00 PM at the Harrisburg Journey Elementary School, there will be a meeting to discuss the redistricting. And then also, on December 7th at 6:00 PM at the T City Hall. And then finally, here at our regular meeting on December 14th at 8:30 in the morning, those things will be discussed. Anyone else?
Madam Chair, I'd like to do a special shout out to Representative Ernie Otten. As Representative Otten has proposed a legislation for county government to be able to levy a sales tax. And the idea of that is it gives the ability for county government to use these funds for buildings, for jails, or for courtrooms, or things like that. But I think Representative Otten deserves a special shout out on that, because that's not a popular thing to do. But I had an opportunity to visit with Representative Otten, and he's gone to the governor, and he's talked to other legislators. And I admire his tenacity and leadership for that. What basically it calls for, it gives county government the ability to levy a sales tax, which would be used exclusively for buildings, for example, a jail or courtroom space. But the other thing that Representative Otten has included is to be able to use for roads and bridges. We also have another bill. Senator Steinhauser has a similar bill, which is limited just to buildings. And then we have a commissioner from up at Cottington County, Lee Gable, also has one. So what the county association is doing is evaluating all of these three, and to see which one they will endorse. Just from this commissioner's standpoint, I think Representative Otten's is much more clearer, and gives much more discretion to counties to make that decision on what they choose to levy as a tax. But I did want to tell him that, you know, it takes grit to come out in this kind of year and advocate for any kind of tax increase. And what I like about it also is it gives us the discretion to do that, but it will not raise property taxes for any buildings or anything that we have to do. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Poppins, you're with us now?
Yes, I've been here the whole time. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody, any other commissioners have a report they'd like to make?
Yes, Madam Chair. I want to give a shout out. I think our next meeting is not scheduled until Tuesday, December 7th. So if I don't say something now, it'll be too late. But I want to give a shout out to my grandfather, who's a Korean War veteran, who's going to turn 100 years old on December 6th. He lives in Ellsworth, Minnesota, and I'm looking forward to the birthday party, and here's to grandpa.
Well, thank you for your service.
Absolutely. Will do.
Thank you for that. We will go on and move on to our regular business. The first item on the agenda is a public hearing.
Now's the time for a public hearing to appeal conditional use permit USC 0103-2021.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Toby Brown, representing county planning. On October 18th, the Planning Commission approved the transfer of one building eligibility from parcel 150581010 to parcel 150582010. And I'll show that on the screen now. So it'd be this one acre parcel, had an existing eligibility transferred to this parcel here. The Planning Commission approved that conditional use permit on a vote of four, zero, to one. The Planning Commission did attach conditions to that permit. Two conditions, those conditions being that it applies to the transfer of one building eligibility. At that time, parcel 1010 was not platted. It is now, or it wasn't. It was platted, but it wasn't identified through a parcel. The second one was a right to farm notice covenant should be placed on the deed prior to issuance of a building permit. In accordance with Section 1906 of the ordinance, Ryan Abel did file an appeal with our office of the Planning Commission's decision. So today is the time and place for a public hearing, for the Board of Commissioners to consider that appeal. After the public hearing has been concluded, as noted in Section 1906, the Board of Commissioners can either uphold, overrule, or amend that decision that was adopted by the Planning Commission on October 18th. Subject property is approximately five miles to the west of the city of Sioux Falls and the city of T. The property is owned A1 agricultural, as is all surrounding properties. With that, if you'd have any questions, any questions that you have for staff at this time?
Does anyone have questions for staff?
Toby, there was one vote that abstained. Do you recall at all why?
Commissioner Scott abstained, but he didn't announce why that he abstained.
For those of us that might not understand here, the right to farm, can you explain that to those that are here?
Yes. So within the zoning ordinance, there's a provision that when we plat a property that's going to be utilized for a single-family dwelling, they have to file with the Register of Deeds essentially a right to farm covenant that's outlined in the zoning ordinance.
Toby, what was the rationale for the moving of the building permit?
One, did not exist on the subject, on the property, and so they moved it so they could obtain an eligibility or building site.
And was that to be, what, for a house to be built?
Yes. One, single-family dwelling. So this parcel had three building eligibilities.
Great.
Platinum Properties LLC, which is the applicant, purchased one acre plus a building eligibility. And in accordance with the ordinance, they transferred that building eligibility to this piece of property.
Any other questions for staff?
So where specifically would it be? How many acres are?
It'll be this full parcel that it was moved to, so approximately, I think it's 36 acres. More than likely, though, the house would be placed up here. But at the time, we haven't received a building permit yet for it. The only thing that's been transferred is the right to construct a single-family dwelling on that property.
So again, you pointed way up into the corner up there, correct?
Correct.
So how are you going to get there?
There's a road that's right here.
Is there?
Township Road. Yep. And this is actually the Turner County line, sorry, across the road is actually Turner County. And then this is essentially, 269th Street is right up here.
And Toby, it looks like the current is, is that a wet land? I mean, it looks like a low area.
This property here, or this?
Right. Where the transfer's coming from?
Uh, yeah.
I mean, that doesn't look buildable.
No.
All right, this is our public hearing. If there's anyone here to speak in favor of the appeal of the conditional use permit, come on up. All right. And anyone here to speak against it? If not, I consider a motion.
Madam Chair, I have a question for Toby. Toby, is this fellow right here going to speak on this issue? Or is there a reason why nobody's, why the applicant is not speaking in favor of his own appeal?
Yeah. The applicant, Corey Davis, is sitting up front there.
Oh, okay.
Do you have anything you want to say about it, Corey? If you do, would you just step up to the mic, please?
Yeah.
Thank you. I just need you to state your name and address.
Sure. Corey Davis. My business address for my LLC is 27210 Huckfin Circle in Harrisburg. Being there, wasn't anybody to speak against or regarding the appeal, that's why I didn't get up and say anything. But it's just a simple transfer from the building eligibility from one location to another, rather than having to take a driveway all the way through that property out to the spot where the building eligibility is. It made more sense to me to transfer it over to the, closer to the road. And I have already spoken with the road district to get approval, to get an approach. So, that's...
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Davis?
How far will that be off the road?
Well, I would have to adhere to all of the guidelines, as far as the county guidelines, as far as setbacks go.
So the house?
Sir, sir, if you want to address everybody, you'd have to come up to the microphone and state your name and address, please. Thank you.
Is that it?
Depends on the question.
Good for now.
Yeah. Arlen G. Knott, 46526-271st Street. I was just curious if the, if the, I own the property to the south of this, and I was just wondering how close that house would be to my property there.
Do you have, do you have an answer to that question? You don't, do you? Right.
Because like you say, when, if it's going to be down in that corner there, to get there is going to be a real problem. I mean, there are several ditches, there are several slews. If it was closer up to the northwest part, I guess that wouldn't be a concern. But I was just wondering, if the, if it's down there, how would they approach that?
And there's no building permit that's been applied for yet. This is simply on the transfer of the eligibility.
Because I've had trouble with that before, where someone's wanted an easement, and then it just turns out to be a real circus.
Sure.
So I was just wondering where exactly that house would be situated at, if you knew for sure.
I don't. You just need to come up to the microphone. Thanks.
So, in the conversations that I've had with the person that's planning to purchase the property from me, the, their intention is to put the house in line with the other two that are there at?
Right.
26912 and 269.
Okay.
Yeah. So, I mean, because like, like you had kind of referenced, the driest spot is going to be there closest to the road.
Right. Because this is a lot of low spots, and slews, and ditches, and...
Right. Which is one of the reasons why, for the building transfer from the one parcel to the other to begin with. So it would make more sense to be able to build in that area.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah. To access that, that would be a real problem. Yeah. So, okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you very much.
You bet. Anybody else have anything that they'd like addressed for this public hearing? Hi, come on up and just state your name and address.
Ryan Abel, 26946-464th Ave. And I'm sorry, I ran like I did. We had a really hard time getting the kids out for daycare this morning.
That's all right.
So I spoke with, I'll just start with this. I spoke with all of our neighbors from 269th all the way down to 271st. And I had them fill out a questionnaire, and I've got those with me. But I guess just in summary, all of them, of all the people, I was able to speak with every single person but one on that road. Of the people I spoke with, all but one agreed with everything that I'm going to be saying here. And again, I have this with me, and he did not fill out the form. He was neutral on everything. And then, a couple marked some things as not applicable, because they didn't apply. But ultimately, I'll just kind of go through the list of concerns in the area. One, a big one is groundwater management. If you look to the narrow portion between what would be like the normal 10-acre lots and the back area there, that is part of the natural drainage for that entire area. Sometimes the water flows back into the pond, the larger pond you see on the screen on, I don't have a mouse here, otherwise I'd show you guys. But, yeah, the water flows both through my property, so I'm the bottom house there, and then up into that pond, but it also kind of tends to flow back in through. So if they change anything with the lay of the land there, it's going to cause a lot of problems. Myself and all of my neighbors actually, on that quarter, have spent money in the last two years just trying to deal with the groundwater problems we currently have. So we have, the whole neighborhood shares concerns about that. There's been drainage tile put in place, there's been culverts put in place, there's been major ditch work in the most northwest property there done in the last year. Every year since, between 2010 and 2019, where the water flows under 464th Ave, that area has flooded every single year between 2010 and 2019. In 2019, it actually did so much damage that it required the replacement of that culvert. We've had flooding in my basement. Nancy's house flooded in 2019 due to drainage concerns. So depending on what's done with this land, this could be a real problem. And if you look at the flood plain portion of it, and you look at the 1% topo portion, it basically surrounds my house and backs the other checkbox on that one as well. I have it on this map. You can't see it the way they've shown it there. There we go. But those low line 1% areas back right up to my house, it's been a problem in the past, and they back all the way up to my neighbor's house, and they surround Nancy's house all the way up on the northwest corner. So this has been a real problem in the past. It continues to be a problem, and there are issues with, that are still trying to be resolved in the community between the different parties involved to have this dealt with So, at a bare minimum, we'd really like to see a drainage review done, and make a drainage plan part of the process as a part of the conditional use or whatever, and have the community be involved with that. Another major issue is real water in that area. We see significant pressure fluctuations on our properties. I've seen pressures up to 140 PSI at my house. I've got a gauge on my water system. My neighbors see similar problems, and we've seen insufficient pressure down below, it's like, say, 60 PSI. Depending on how people are using water in the community, that points to that the water main is insufficient currently for dealing with our homes. And that's another concern, because that's going to put more drain on the systems there. I did talk to a variety of people about the roads. Like I said, all have experienced unsatisfactory road conditions over the last few years. Even the summer, we had rutting six inches deep along that road, just because, and I did talk to the Delaware Pre Township and the people that maintain the roads, and they said they have a really hard time getting staff out there just to maintain the roads as they are. One of the guys that I talked to told me that the road was, he went to a training seminar on how to maintain the roads properly and whatnot, and he said that our gravel was designed for 30 to 35 cars a day, and we're seeing at least 10x that conservatively. So road conditions are a problem. And then, the other, and last issue is ultimately, it's a massive acreage, and there's a lot of concerns in the community, what's going to be done with that land. And there's also an option for the 22 acres to the north of that land to be combined with that sale, if you look at the listing. So there's people concerned, but well, yeah, if they build the house over there, but what are they going to do with the other nearly 50 acres in the back? That is currently CRP that everybody's experiencing.
Thank you.
Yep.
Toby, if this, if the conditional use goes through, the drainage concerns are going to be addressed with a building permit. Is that correct?
Site plan will be addressed with the building permit, yes.
Okay.
Is this a, is this just a single-family home? I mean, we're not putting extra buildings, we're not, this is a single-family home for husband, wife, and family, correct? I mean, we're not talking a multifamily, we're just talking about one house.
Well, we don't know at this point in time. I mean, we're selling the land. I mean, the intent at the moment is...
All right, I'm going to call point of order. Commissioner Schmidt has the floor, and he's asking a question of staff.
This is a single-family home, that's all. I mean, I understand concerns, but we don't know the future. We can't legislate for the future. But we have in front of us a single-family application for one home and a garage, I would imagine, correct?
Yeah, before you, the transfer of one eligibility for the future construction of one single-family dwelling.
But that's what that person, Mr. Davis, that's what that person will be building.
Yes.
We don't know the design of the house, or the bigness of the house, whether it's going to be a, you know, a split level, or if it's going to be a slab-on-grade, or if it's going to have a full basement, or any of that kind of stuff, right? Okay.
All right, is there anyone else that's here to speak in favor or against the conditional use permit? If not, I'd ask for a motion.
Well, before I make any motion is made, I'd ask the other commissioners, do you think that, you know, I understand what these individuals are saying, and there's nothing worse than having water in your basement. I've been through it far too many times. But that whole drainage area, I look at it, and I keep thinking, this is just a single-family home. And if it's one family, the road conditions, you're adding maybe another car to come and go. The real water pressure, that has to do with the system itself needs to be looked at. And the impact that they would have on overall groundwater from a single-family home, if it's built on a high spot, I don't know that it would really affect all that drainage. So I'd like to hear from other commissioners, from their vantage point.
Well, I would, I would agree with what you're saying, Commissioner Schmidt. I mean, I'm going to be in favor of transferring this eligibility today, for the reasons that you've already expressed. Any other commissioners have any comments about that?
I think there's a lot of variables here that, yeah, another home is just adding to the problems that were listed.
My comment would be, is this right to build a home already exists in the area they're moving and identifying? I think a lot of the concerns will have to be addressed with the site, and not with actually eligibility.
I mean, can somebody tell me how the construction of another home is, is a problem here?
Do you mind if I point out the concern on the map of the drainage?
Yeah, it's not a rhetorical question. I mean, if somebody's got some input on it, I want to hear it.
If you want to come up, that's fine. Just state your name and address.
Ryan Abel, 26946-464th Ave. The real problem is in the narrow area between the back piece of the property for drainage, where it could really have major impacts, and the front piece of the property. Right now, that's all on CRP. And if they wanted to build, well, it was on CRP until this year, and the 22 acres to the north is currently in CRP. But that wet area in that narrow spot, that's where all this water flows. If things change there, it can cause a real problem. So if they build access, like build a road or anything through there, dump some gravel in there, all the water that flows through my house and my neighbor's house won't be able to flow through there. If that failed, then it could cause a major flooding problem downstream. So like, if they don't put sufficient culverts and other things in those areas, on that property, that would, I'm sure they're going to want to have access to in the back, since they're buying 30 acres back there nearly, that could cause the problems. And we have had some situations recently, and there's some conflict in the neighborhood right now about trying to deal with this, where they've put culverts around, I'm just going to walk to the, and I'll point out.
Toby, you want to give him the microphone that you have?
So at this point here, and at this point here, a culvert was put in place. It wasn't put in place properly. That's caused water to backfill at times, even instead of flowing down the normal path this way, it'll actually flow backwards through here in this area that I'm saying is of major concern, which is part of the sale. So if the person builds the house here, and they want to do something with this land, and they build a roadway through here or something, and they do it improperly, it could cause major problems here as well as in other areas, because it's going to affect all the natural flow of the water. The area where I was saying we had all the road problems is also part of this natural flow that comes through this field, which has all been worse, made worse because of tiling over here. So these flows do get very significant at times and come around my house. But this is the area where we've had the roads failure problems and a lot of rutting and other issues, resulting from all the way that the water flows through the system. So it's natural flows currently, but new problems have been introduced recently that's of current contention in the neighborhood. But if anything else changed in here, it could be pretty disastrous. So while building a house here, I agree, isn't going to affect this. The sale of this and the development of this by that owner in the future could cause problems, and that's why I suggested that we do some sort of a drainage survey and make sure that we have conditional uses on this, because it could affect everybody in the area. At a bare minimum, I think that should be what's happening.
And there will be a site plan in the future if somebody decides to buy this, or simply moving an eligibility.
I think, it's my understanding that it's part of your charter to put conditional uses on this transfer, and to deal with things like drainage and water concerns for drainage in the area. I believe that's part of the charter of the committee.
Toby, do you have any further input that you want to give?
So, it is, it is a conditional use permit. You can attach conditions to it. Your duty is to either uphold, overrule, or amend, which you could add additional conditions to it. You know, as far as a site plan review, will ensure that, you know, that there is no blockage of drainage. no blockage of drainage on there. But from a single, one single-family dwelling perspective, there is no drainage standard for that.
So, the construction of the home in and of itself really isn't the concern. The real concern here, what I'm hearing, is if that narrow area were to have a road built over it, right? And, I mean, under the law, you already cannot change the natural flow of water. Now, I understand the, the input from the citizens here is, they would rather have us deal with it than have to go out, if something would happen, have to go out and hire a private lawyer in order to resolve it. Certainly understand that concern. So, with regard to the issues about traffic on the roads, you know, I don't think that the, adding a single-family home is going to be the death knell of that gravel road. Similarly, with regard to the, the rural water issue, I mean, logically speaking then, that means that you should be going to rural water and telling them, you can't add anybody onto their system whatsoever, right? And I don't know if you've done that or not, but, because what you're saying is, the main is not big enough, i.e., you cannot add another single-family home onto this, right? So, that means you can't add any more single-family homes onto it, right? So, under that standard, you're basically saying, if I understand-
The way, on the way that-
Sir, just, let, can you share on how's the floor?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean, so, I mean, basically, under that standard then, what you're saying is there can be no more growth period whatsoever on the rural water system. I mean, because I don't know if, you know, and granted, I'm not a rural water expert, but if you're connected into the main, it means that you can have no more homes on it, right?
Not necessarily.
Okay, so, yeah, go ahead. I mean, I want some real answers here.
So, my background, I have a doctor in engineering, I've been doing, working in the field for 22 years, so I have significant experience. This is all related to flow and thermodynamics and things like that. Ultimately, it's not that it could be the entire system, that's, sorry, hit the note. It's possible that the overall system can't handle it, and yes, no more houses should be added to the system, that is a possibility. But it's also possible that it's just that line that's feeding that collection of houses is just insufficiently small, so it's just a problem along those roads. Without working at, looking at the piping on the system, I couldn't tell you whether it's an overall capacity system for that rural water system or just that line that's feeding that collection of houses. But it could be one or the other. I don't know at the moment.
Right, we just don't know.
I don't know which one it is.
Okay, all right.
But, so, to your point, yes, it could be the whole system and it could be a problem for everybody, or it could be just that string of houses there.
So, then, let me ask you this. If we would say that one of the conditions you put on the conditional use permit is, you can't black, block the flow of the natural drainage water, which is already the law in South Dakota anyway, you're already not allowed to block the natural flow of water, would that assuage your concerns?
On that one, yes.
But not any of the others?
The rural water and the roads are, to me, separate issues.
Which, of course, this body has no control over.
Yeah, I mean, the way I-
Unfortunately, the commission can't waive its want and increase capacity, and it's a township road.
I don't disagree with that. To me, the way I look at this is there's two things. A, that full northeast quarter, which is not fully shown on the map, has access to 269th. So, that housing eligibility in that quarter could be, that house could live along that stretch of road on the western half of 269th, anywhere along there, and now you would be putting less strain on that rural water system, less strain on that gravel road, and there would be no effect to the drainage, so it would be, to me personally, a better use of that eligibility because they wouldn't be putting strains on those systems. And the way I look at it also is you guys are all elected officials and also representing the constituent body that elected you, and I also think it's part of your duty to do the will of the people that elected you. I mean, these are all concerns, like I said, all but one, well, one was neutral and all but one agreed with what I was saying here. So, I mean, it's really more of a situation of, can we find a way to either address all these concerns or not transfer this eligibility and put it into a place where it could be better used and served on 269th? Because that one acre was just recently replanted in the last month. I mean, it could have been used up along 269th. It's not that that has always been there and it's always been a problem of access to that location. It's an access problem that was created in the last month when that thing was replatted, that one acre. It's actually sitting on effectively swampland right now.
Toby, remind me, does the site plan have to be approved by the commission?
For the, for the building permit?
Correct.
No.
And there's no appeal mechanism for the community for that, is there?
Yes.
There is?
Yes.
Okay.
I've, Toby, you know, with all due respect, Ryan, I understand your, your concerns. I truly do. But I'm with Commissioner Aaron's here in that the limited scope that we get to deal with, we're not, and all the concerns about the drainage, and that whole area is wet. It always has been wet around T and that area. But when I look back to that one building site, and I'm looking at that dot in the middle of that thing, and I don't know what, if that's, that's the case. So, Toby, is that land where that is, is that low as well? I mean, is that a high point?
The, the one acre parcel?
Yeah, where, you know, where, where he may put a, may put a, a building site. Now, to the concerns of the public, if, if it is his intent to put a house there and then start wanting to take that out of CRP, and I don't know how long it's in CRP, if it's, do you know?
It's already over. It's no longer in CRP.
On this whole area?
On the whole 37 acres.
So, that is eligible for?
Farming or whatever.
Well, I don't know how much farming is going to do in a swamp, but-
Eligible whatever it's eligible.
So, I'd feel a whole lot more comfortable if he'd put it back in CRP because then you wouldn't touch anything. But I'm still limiting to what we have to decide today is a building eligibility. But if I understand, Ryan, that's kind of the nose under the tent. So, if you get the house there, does that mean that they're going to start developing the rest of this whole area here? And how that can mess up the drainage for the, for everybody around it? But on the other hand, our job is to look at, do we approve this building eligibility or not? And what stipulations do we want to place on that? Correct?
That's my understanding.
Well, the, the conditions I would put on it are, you can't block the natural flow of water and you need to have adequate-sized, if you are going to build some kind of road on that property, you've got to have an adequate-sized culvert or vessel, whatever they choose to use in order to move that water so it doesn't affect upstream folks with pooling or downstream folks with flooding, right? I mean, I think that would be reasonable. I mean, unfortunately for Mr. Abel, I can't address the, the road issue. I mean, I'd probably disagree with you to a certain extent, Mr. Abel. It's probably, if it's a single-family home, you're probably talking two or three cars. So, I probably disagree with you there that, that presents a, the death knell of that township road with two or three extra cars. With regard to the, the rural water system, yeah, I mean, there are, there are problems with the rural water system, but I think by and large, customers are receiving the service they signed up for. But I highly encourage you, if you don't think you're getting good service, to go to the Rural Water Board and tell them. And I, maybe you've already done that, I don't know. They, they have not sent us any letters stating that adding on an additional home is going to be a problem. Now, I don't know if they'd be the first person to want to send that letter out, but I understand the concern of the community. So, the question is here, can we thread the needle? Can we allow these people who are going to use this land to be able to use their land that is consistent in a way with the rest of the neighborhood, i.e., building a single-family home? But can we also preserve and protect surrounding landowners with regard to the drainage issue, which is a major issue in Lincoln County? And I think we could do that in a very reasonable way. Nobody ever runs the table and nobody ever gets 100% of what they want to. Community here today wants no growth. The landowner here just wants to be able to have their eligibility, but I would put some conditions on it and I'd say, no run, no, they can't impede the flow of the, the natural flow of the water and they need to have adequate-sized culverts there. I don't think we're going to make them go out and do these multi-tens-of-thousand-dollar studies to fix the drainage issue because I don't think the person who wants to build a single-family home here is causing the drainage problem. I think it's a combination of mother nature as well as the people who already live there who may, may, I'm not saying they did, may have contributed to some of these drainage issues as well. So, it's not as if this person who wants to live there is all of a sudden the, the, you know, promulgator of all these problems. Community problems usually have a root in, somewhere in the community. So, I think we could thread the needle. I'll support it, but it's going to have conditions on it that it can't, can't impact, can't negatively impact flow water at all.
Commissioner Aaron's, are you making a motion?
That's my motion.
Well, can you clarify that for the record, please?
Yeah, so my motion would be to approve the transfer of the one building eligibility, but I would also attach conditions. And here are the conditions I would attach. Number one, any development on the property cannot affect the natural flow of water. Number two, if these people want to, if the people who do purchase this property or build there want to undertake any type of project that is going to affect the natural flow of water, they're going to have to come back to this board and get permission or approval.
I'll second this motion for discussion.
Thank you. I'm getting a look. Staff, are there any issues with the motion that's been presented? You want to come up and use the microphone?
So long as the motion is for the site plan to come back to the commission if there's that concern versus the permit, which is typically administrative process that doesn't normally condition to come back to the board, it would normally be appealed. So, just for procedural, if you'll attach it to the site plan, I think we can do that.
The site plan would come back in front of us?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I guess I want a little something extra here, right? And is that little something extra, the protection here for the community, because drainage issues are such a big deal in Lincoln County, can we attach that to the conditional use permit and the site, site plan? I mean, it gives the potential aggrieved party extra protection then administratively so they don't have to go hire lawyers and all that. They can just come here to this commission, to their elected folks, and they can say, hey, somebody wants to build a culvert out there and they just want to put a 16-inch culvert in there. That's a violation of the conditional use permit. It ought to be a 48-inch culvert. So, if we attach it to the conditional use permit, then it allows aggrieved parties, they don't have to go out, file lawsuits, clog up the courts, they can just come here, right?
Well, I think what there's, I think what staff is saying, that if we're saying it has to be, the conditional use is conditioned upon following whatever the approved site plan is. And if that site plan needs to come back in front of us, we can say that.
If that, if that is the case, Madam Chair, then I can agree to that. And, and what I can articulate here is that the site plan, the folks, if they want to build something that's going to impede the natural flow of water there, they got to come back to us.
So, once again, as long as we're talking about specifically attaching that condition to the site plan, I just don't want to cross over between administrative functions for staff and the policy setting for the board. So, I would say, as long as you're doing that for the site plan, I think we can do that.
Kind of sounds like that's our only option.
I think you'll still accomplish your goals.
Okay, very well.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Commissioner Poppins.
A clarification, Commissioner Aaron's. I guess I, I still have my trust in my, in our planning department not to allow a site plan that wouldn't follow all of our guidelines to start with. Are you suggesting that there be something that we would impose more than what the, the office would oversee because we already have review of site plans by engineering and, and other things that we already are paying for?
Well, I think what it does is it triggers the opportunity for the public to be able to come back in and say, you said you, you said you were going to do this because it's such a big issue with regard to flooding and drainage. And then it allows accountability on the people who made, it allows accountability for the public against us as a commission to be able to come back in and say, you said you were going to take another look at this. So, that's why I want to structure it the way it is right now because, no offense to Toby, but he's not accountable to the public in, in the way that we are as policymakers and elected officials. So, this makes us accountable for the decision we make here today. And it keeps everybody honest and, and, you know, I don't think this, I hope this person who builds this single-family home isn't going to go in there and just wreck everything that the community's tried to do, but if they do go in there and want to build a road and block up the water and dam it up and then flood the people downstream, at least there's a mechanism for the community to come back in and say, hey, we, we didn't sign on to this, you know? We wanted it to be the way that it is right now. So, I think it keeps everybody honest and, and keeps the process moving forward, I think. Gives the public some assurances that we're going to take into consideration drainage issue, but it also balances the rights of the landowner or the potential future landowner here to be able to build a house. And I will say this, the single-family house is consistent with other people in the neighborhood. There's one, two, three, four single-family homes in that same section there.
So, is your motion then, you're amending your motion to be that the conditional use permit is conditioned upon compliance with the site plan?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second for that?
Second that.
Thank you.
I have one question. I don't mean to belabor this, Madam Chair. Toby, would you put, please put back up the floodplain and all of those things? I have a question for Brian on that. Because there was a culvert put in that you said caused all kinds of problems. Who put the culvert in and under whose authority did they do that?
Do you want to, want me to show you where the culvert?
Well, the one, the one that is causing problems, as you said, when a culvert was put in, it has been a problem. And it was up in that northeast to the map.
Right, it was put in by Chad, who lives in that area there.
I mean, was it on his own personal property? Did he just do it without any authority or did-
Let me, can you pull up the map again? I think it might be on his property, yes.
Can you scroll down?
You'll need to get the microphone again also.
So, it's, there's one here and one here. So, one is, the other one is right on the edge of this property that's in question right now. He did that on his own, it's probably a little undersized. It wasn't set probably according to grade, so there's just some things that need to be corrected with it. I mean, the intent was to help, but it wasn't done properly. Does that make sense? And now, there's a little bit of contention between two of the neighbors about whether the problem is continuing. The other thing that's continued to make the problem a little bit worse is that this area, the land, hasn't been maintained, so there's a lot of grass and switchgrass and things that have grown that are impeding the flow more now than it used to be. So, the water, high times of the season tends to flood back into this way because- So the water, high times of the season tends to flood back into this way because of the way those culverts are. And then, as the grass tends to grow, then it doesn't drain nearly as quickly, so the water is prolonged in that area.
Well, Brian, I don't mean to delay this, but the reason I ask that question is, I think what Commissioner Ehrens has put in place with, with his amendments, I think, addresses that situation so that you don't have a similar individual putting in a culvert without having it engineered and understood the size and everything like that. So it can assure the landowners that I think the commission is really trying to do due diligence on this one. I call the question, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I do have a clarification. Please.
Okay.
This is for staff, Toby. Just for clarification, anything in the motion that is in front of us actually not something that we already do through the process of your office with the review of it by an engineer and things like that? I'm just verifying if there's actually anything additional that we're doing that isn't already done through the process. Thank you.
Yeah, so I guess the question would be is, is, and John Peters is a floodplain minister, the question would be is if it requires a floodplain permit, which in case, we would review. There is no standards essentially if I'm building a single-family dwelling for, for drainage, other than as Commissioner Ehrens points out, that we can't, you know, state law says you can't obstruct natural flows of drainage. But on a typical residential development, if there's no floodplain on the property, per the ordinances, there's no requirement to review drainage requirements.
Thank you. I'm going to call the question, please.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Only because I believe it's already in our process, I am voting no. I do respect the intent to appease the local landlords, make sure that we are doing what we are supposed to be doing. Thank you.
Commissioner Gibbon?
No.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes.
Motion carries. Move on to our next public hearing.
This is a public hearing to consider an application submitted by Culture Shock LLC to acquire a medical marijuana license to operate outside of a municipality on the property legally described as Timmerman Edition, tract one, southeast quarter, 17151, also known as parcel 150, 57D100, adjacent to the east of 46560, 270th Street. The auditor's office is in receipt of the completed application from Culture Shock LLC for the license.
We have that in our share drive, Sharon?
Yes.
Yes.
There are a few things in there that are under the confidential because it's got their personal information on it, but the main application is in your share drive.
Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak as the applicant here? Yeah, you want to come up? Can you just state your name and address and tell us what your intentions are with the application?
My name is Casey Han. I am the owner of the, the parcel that we are going to build this property on. We're going to build a cultivation facility on the four-acre parcel that's, that's, that you guys are staying. And yeah, we're just here to get the approval.
Thank you.
If there's any other questions?
Do any of the commissioners have any questions for Casey?
Casey, you have made an application for the cultivation. Have you made any arrangements for security of this? Because you are growing a, a product that will be used. But I mean, could it, have you made security arrangements, fencing, lighting? How big do you plan to be? That kind of stuff, can you share?
Uh, yes. So this is, this property has not been built yet. All of that stuff will be addressed during the build.
Okay.
We are doing a, a 32-camera minimum security system. It'll be, any, any entry into the facility will be a key card specifically to that, to that person.
And this is just an application for the license itself, not the facility?
Correct.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for the applicant?
I do. I probably disagree that this is a public hearing to consider the application. I do think those issues are relevant to approving an application. One of the things they do out in Colorado is grow shops out there or any type of facility that handles medical, or handles cannabis. I know we're talking about medical cannabis here, out there, it's cannibal, recreational, et cetera, is they allow their sheriff's department to have access to their security systems and their video feeds. Has that been considered? And if so, would you allow that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
How big, I, I still like to know how big of a facility you're planning to grow. I mean, do you have the number of plants, et cetera, stuff? I don't want to get into actual growing, but you must have some idea on how many, but your production would be.
Of course, yes. Yes, we have drew, we have driven, drawn up a plan, a blueprint for what the facility would be. It'd be roughly about 1,200 square feet facility. I believe it's attached to one of the amendments with, with Sherry, but it might be confidential.
Mr. Golden, just a question for some clarification. Have these folks went through the state process to get the medical marijuana license?
They have.
And that's been approved, correct?
To complete it, they have to complete all the requirements in Lincoln County before the state will approve their registration.
Okay.
So, and if they don't have their application completed or a license, they wouldn't have the requirements in order to complete.
So this is one step, one step in that process?
Yes.
Okay.
As part of this process, are all the investors required to undergo a background check? Or is it just the named owners? Do you know?
I do. It, it is anybody that works in the facility, whether it's just a, the low-level employees to all of the management. Anybody has to go through that background check and be, be qualified.
Mr. Golden, has, has this applicant met all of the requirements that we have put in our ordinance?
Background check has been done. They've given us a security plan. They've identified where it's going to be. They've initially got a tentative that the site would be appropriate from planning and zoning, which just means that it's zoned appropriately for this type of activity. So they've met all of our requirements. They have identified all the individuals that will be participating. They've given us their names, their backgrounds, their histories, and we've run criminal background checks.
So all the boxes have been checked at this point? So he's complied with every detail that we've set forth as an ordinance? When somebody makes an application, they have done everything necessary to comply, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So this is the first hearing we've held on one of these.
Absolutely.
As you can see, it's a little cumbersome or awkward. Can you tell us, but I think more importantly, the public, how this is going to work out there as it relates to you guys and your, your proposed operation?
How do you mean?
Well, what are you going to do out there?
We're going to assemble a 12,000-square-foot facility, secured facility, and we're going to cultivate cannabis for retail, we're going to wholesale it to any of the dispensaries, not necessarily ours, or if we do one, we want to facilitate any dispensary that, that would be interested in that.
And then as part of your application, you're, are you also seeking beyond cultivation to manufacture? Did I see that?
I, we did not go for manufacturing, but I believe it's worded in there like that. And I think that's a, I think that's a typo on your guys' part. I don't, we have not applied for the manufacturing part of that.
Because I wanted to get some clarification on that, because I was really going to delve into that because obviously manufacturing operations are much more in-depth.
Correct. You're dealing with edibles, you're dealing with FDA, you're dealing with, you know, an edible product versus just, this will just be the flower cannabis.
Yeah, because there could have been, you know, safety booths out there and that whole deal. So what you're telling us is probably a typo on the part of somebody at the county. All you're going to do is, is cultivate out there?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
On the briefing form, it says the facility east of 46560, 270th Street. So is this the location you live by and you'd be building this facility right next to it?
Correct. I own both parcels. The 46560 is my personal address. The four-acre parcel right to the west of that is the, the address of the, the site.
So approximately how far from your home then?
From where our actual living, we're probably 2,000 feet, maybe 1,500.
For give my ignorance here, is 270th Street a gravel road?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions for the applicant? If not, sorry, you can have a seat.
Thank you.
And is there anyone here to speak in favor of the application? If not, is there anyone here to speak against the application? If not, consider a motion.
I move to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, Sherry, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes.
Motion carries. Congratulations on that step. Now we'll move on to our next public hearing.
Now's the time for a public hearing for the purpose of adopting the following supplements to the 2021 budget. A supplement adding $58,000 to the election for the two referendum elections, $60,000 to support a poor for large hospital claims paid in July, $140,000 to enter government will tax to cities due to increase in will tax collections, $435,000 to 911 Communications due to remodel and dispatch center, $23,500 to domestic abuse due to new policy to transfer funds in the account.
Thank you. First, I'm going to ask if there's any questions for staff by the commission. If not, anyone from the public care to comment on the, since this is our public hearing for these supplements? If not, Sherry, will you call the question?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes.
Move on to item four on our agenda. Julia?
Good morning. It was my understanding that from the last meeting, there was some interest in making some adjustments to the health insurance options or choice?
We did have, we didn't have it on the agenda, I guess, the way we, I thought it was going to be on the agenda. But anyway, we were, the discussion was whether there was any interest, since after we chose our healthcare provider, if there was any interest in going back and re, I guess, looking at that again because there were phone calls, several phone calls that I received just explaining the tens of thousands of dollars that people were paying out of pocket in addition to the health insurance because it was not covering diagnostic testing. And so I think in one instance, somebody had paid the, you know, $10,000 for the premiums over the year and then had paid an additional, in one instance, $14,000 because things weren't covered by the health insurance, including the diagnostic testing. So if we don't want to do anything, that's fine, but I thought because of the number of phone calls I received, that maybe we should relook at that.
I would agree. I think that I have received phone calls, several in fact, about that similar situation where the health insurance was certainly lacking in that regard and exposing these individuals to such high costs because they were at market. They had no health insurance, they, they just didn't. So I don't know what the proper steps would be, but I think we should go back and look at that and, and add that to our insurance that we provide for our staff.
Well, I didn't receive any phone calls per se from people who were complaining about the policy, but after the last meeting, I did receive several phone calls from the public. And the public wanted us to, you know, balance the interest of our employees with those of the taxpayers. And what they suggested was just sticking with the vote that we had made. So, and I think I had received two different phone calls on that issue from people who are not normally involved in this process. So I'll probably be sticking to the same vote that I had last time.
Commissioner Gibbon, what are your thoughts on that issue?
Well, I think my vote from the past is, speaks for itself.
All right. And Commissioner Poppins, any comments? I know you weren't present for our last vote.
My, I, I certainly can appreciate and understand your situation, but I would offer for this. We have to be extremely careful and look in at our staff overall because we live in a highly competitive environment right now with the number of jobs that are available in this community, with the salaries that are being paid, with the bonuses that are being paid. And I think it's imperative that we provide the best possible packages to our employees so that they are covered. Because after all, we got to remember one thing. The most important people in this building are not the commissioners, they are the individuals that carry out the day-to-day operations on, on a basis to take care of the public. And I think it's incumbent for us. So I, I still won't change my mind if we don't have the votes for it, but anyway, I don't think it's fair for those individuals to have to pay thousands and thousands of dollars when we could provide preventing that from happening.
Commissioner Poppins, are you on the line or did we lose you?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can, I can now. We're just.
Apologies.
That's all right.
Yes, I've been, I've been here. The, the point that I have, I am again sympathetic to both sides of this issue. So if I was to look at changing my vote, I would also have the amendment to it that whatever that difference is, is the county picks up that portion of it because there were half of the employees that did not want to buy their survey, make that change. And so increasing their, their insurance costs, I would not be in favor of doing that, but I would be in favor that the county pick up that difference because the employees are, as Commissioner Schmidt, our biggest and best asset.
And Julia, do we have any numbers if we went with the, what were the numbers if we went with the eight and a half percent in the county picked up? Do you have numbers to sup, if the county picked up the increase?
I think I did talk to the broker, and this is a rough number because it, it really depends on how many people chose which option. But he was thinking based on last year's numbers and elections, it'd be about $50,000. And to do that, if you want, like Commissioner Poppins is saying, what you, what one option would be is that the county picks up 75% of the premium split and then the employees pick up the 25% and that essentially offsets the increase. And that would be, again, about $50,000. That's one option if you're interested in.
So right now, it's what, 28%? Is that?
Yeah.
The employees portion?
Yeah, you're exactly right.
So it's $50,000 to add that extra? And then what is the other increase that we have to normally pay anyway for the increased premiums? So it'd be 50,000 to cover that extra, but what is the increase from last year to this year? Then underneath that?
It was 6%.
6%.
And what is that cost to the county in terms of real dollars?
$66,000.
So in order to, so it'd be 66,000 plus 50,000, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the 66, we're paying that regardless?
Correct, yeah.
Correct.
Correct.
And the sixty-six is with the plan that we voted to adopt the other day?
Yep, you're exactly right.
How many employees do we have, Julia?
Uh, full-time, one thirty-two, I believe is the last number.
And how many employees carry our insurance?
Um, I was just taking a peek at that. There have been a couple that dropped. It looks like we're looking about eighty that carry the insurance.
How many?
Eighty employees. That's not belly buttons, but that's employees.
And of that, how many were people who made complaints about this diagnostic testing issue? Or, excuse me, I restated that the wrong way. Not how many made complaints. How many people of that eighty are affected with this diagnostic testing fee issue?
Um, so good question. So Sean provided some information. He said that there were three hundred and twenty diagnostic procedures. Now, I don't know who the individuals are and how many. I mean, there's clearly duplicates. And so I can't break it down, um, to that degree. So three hundred and twenty diagnostic procedures. And then, um, the employee cost was seventeen thousand six hundred and forty-one. So that was spread out amongst the employees who had the procedures.
But we don't know how many employees are actually affected by that, correct?
Um, not specifically, no, but I'll show you one more piece of data that might be helpful. Would you mind, um, using this, Carter? Or, oh, perfect, thank you. Okay, so Sean had had this in this presentation. Um, and this just illustrates how many people paid out of pocket and to the level in which they did. Now, so there's nothing saying that this is due to diagnostic, um, uh, procedures per se. But you can see that over the years, it's increased, um, here. So you're looking at thirty, almost forty people that paid over a thousand dollars.
But in twenty-twenty, didn't we have a different plan?
Yes.
Where the diagnostics were covered?
Correct. That's, that's, yep.
So we don't have numbers for twenty-twenty-one without the diagnostic, correct?
Without the diagnostic. Well, this is without the diagnostic.
Well, that's for twenty-twenty, but do you have twenty-twenty-one numbers?
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, no, this was last year's.
Didn't the broker tell us at the last meeting that when we asked for twenty-twenty-one numbers, because of the way that their accounting or that the way their statistical measurement system works, he wouldn't actually be able to pull those numbers?
You're exactly right. So anything, because of our size, he can't get that detailed information. So this is kind of the best we can do to break it down to diagnostic testing and how many people were affected.
Yeah, my guess is you could get it. You'd have to pull all the EOBs and it would take quite a bit of work. It'd be data nice to have, though, to understand how much of the workforce is affected by it. You know, is it five people or is it seventy-nine people?
Based on the responses, I would say it's probably ten to fifteen, twenty. I mean, my personal knowledge, I know two people specifically that just because of diagnostic testing. One paid over forty-five hundred and another person paid over nine thousand. That's not to say there's not more. I just don't know of anymore.
But because of our different health insurance plans, isn't the, isn't that a way we can tell the difference? Because we maybe have eighty people on the health insurance, but are twenty of them on the higher deductible? Were they, the diagnostics isn't a factor?
Correct.
So Julia, the question in front of us, is it worth fifty thousand dollars to add the diagnostic? To have that ability for these people to not have to participate? My question is, in two thousand twenty, if we had a diagnostic program covered, how did we move from covering it to not covering it? I mean, if we had it once, why, where, why did we?
Imagine we were trying to save money.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly what it was. It came down to cost is, um, what I remember from that conversation.
But even with the diagnostic, the members were paying, it looked like about ninety thousand dollars out of pocket?
So Madam Chair, what is it that, um, shall we bring this to a, a vote of whether we want to do this?
Well, that's what I'm wondering, if there is any desire to do it. Commissioner Poppins wasn't present for the last vote, so his vote wasn't. And then we just got the phone calls and on both sides of the coin. So that's the only reason that it's back on the agenda. And if I'm hearing Commissioner Poppins correctly, you would support changing the ratio at which we pay for the coverage? Is that correct? If you're there? Did we lose Commissioner Poppins?
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
Sorry, I missed, is there a motion?
Do you want to make a motion?
I would move that we cover, amend our, uh, policy for healthcare to go to where we cover the diagnostic. But then we pick up that difference, so it does, is not a negative to any of the employees that did not want to make that move. I will make that motion and see where it goes. Thank you.
I'm wondering how we make that split. Right.
Is this somewhat of a binary choice? It's like a menu item. It's not à la carte. We have to choose either the six percent change issue or the eight-point-nine percent plan. There's two plans, right?
Right.
I think it was eight-point-one.
Yep, you're exactly right.
Okay, so there's the six percent, and then there's the eight-point-one.
So he's, I think what Commissioner Poppins is saying, if we pick the eight-point-one, then we're going to also shift the percentage that we are.
Okay, so both.
Responsible for.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Yeah, he talked about seventy-five to twenty-five.
Right. In essence, that should make all the employees very happy.
I would hope so, yes. That would be.
Commissioner Poppins, is that clarification for your motion?
Say the motion again, please.
I'm just trying to clarify your motion. Because we were talking about it in the sense that you would think that, your motion is that the county do the eight-point-one percent with the diagnostic testing.
Correct.
And then adjust the portion of, um, what the county versus employee is responsible for from seventy-five to seventy-five, twenty-five versus the, uh, the twenty-eight, seventy-three or whatever that, whatever that number is. Not a mathematician, but.
Julia, if this was to be passed, this would be fifty thousand dollars of additional cost to the county, correct? Because I mean, we get into the seventy-five, twenty-five, we get into some areas I'm not sure of. But I'm just saying that we looked at this and it would be an additional fifty thousand dollars that the county would pick up to provide this diagnostic, uh, portion to the, to the insurance package.
Well, there's, there's two different pieces. So the, the, the increasing of the split, that's roughly fifty thousand dollars. And again, that depends on elections, what everybody decides to elect. The other piece of it is now if you want to go from the six percent to the eight-point-one percent, that would be an additional increase. So.
Beyond the fifty thousand?
Correct.
And what is that?
Bear with me here. Okay, that's going to be, they're roughly thirty-three thousand. Yeah.
So if we got thirty-three and fifty?
Yep.
So you're talking eighty-three thousand?
Now we got eighty-three on top of the sixty-six. I'll hold the phone a minute.
So we've got to, if you want to do, so what's on the floor for consideration is Commissioner's, Commissioner Poppins's motion.
Julia, you want to make sure and use your microphone?
Sorry. So, or I shouldn't say it's on the floor. It's been proposed as a motion. There's been no second yet.
Yeah.
But just so we can evaluate the cost of the proposal. If we did what Commissioner Poppins is proposing, we've got to pay sixty-six thousand plus eighty-three thousand, correct?
Well, it'd be, it'd be an additional eighty-three to what we're already.
Exactly.
Committed to paying the sixty-six.
The sixty-six would be included in the eighty-three because that's already a part that we're going up.
Okay, yeah, let's take, let's take a step back. That already budgeted for this year, Sherri, you budgeted nine percent, correct? Correct. For insurance.
Mm-hmm.
The commission then made the decision to go with the six percent route. So there was that three percent cushion, so to speak, or whatever you want to call it. So there is still a budgeted item, so I don't know if, where you want to start out with your numbers, but.
Let's roll the numbers back to before we took the vote.
Okay.
Okay, let's roll those numbers back. So let's wave our magic wand.
Okay.
And let's say we didn't do the six percent vote and we did the eight-point-one percent vote.
Gotcha.
How much would that have cost?
It looks like based on elections from last year, would have been roughly ninety thousand dollars, eighty-nine, three oh six.
Okay, so the eight-point-one percent option is ninety thousand dollars roughly.
Yep.
And then it would take another fifty thousand dollars to implement what the Commissioner Poppins is suggesting, right? So ninety plu, ninety thousand plus fifty thousand?
Again, roughly. Sherri's looking at me with a weird look.
The numbers seem way too high. I'm just. The numbers seem high because the six, the six percent is already the automatic increase that, that was like, that was keeping everything the same, right?
Well, nine percent was what was budgeted, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's budgeted, but what the, what he said is he came in and said there would be a six percent increase from last year with everything we had.
Yes.
So then if we're taking it up to eight percent, that's another two percent.
Yep.
Increase. So we should really only, so what was the total increase for the last, or for the insurance? Not the percentages, the dollar amount. You're saying it was ninety thousand dollars?
Yes.
Yeah, so in terms of real dollars. And then if. In, in, in terms of what's going to appear on the budget line item, the choice is, option A is six percent option.
Correct.
Option B is eight-point-one percent option.
Correct.
And then Commissioner Poppins is saying, let's do option B plus fifty thousand.
Correct.
So that's ninety thousand plus fifty thousand that will be going out the door to pay for employee healthcare. So that's ninety plus fifty is a hundred and forty thousand.
But the eight percent.
Minus sixty-six thousand because we're already going to do that unless we're taking health insurance away from the employees.
But you.
But we're not. It's just, that's the real dollars going out the door.
Correct.
The eight percent included adding the diagnostics into it.
Exactly.
It's not eight percent plus six percent. It was an eight percent increase to include diagnostics.
So it's really ninety thousand dollars with the eight percent. That's it.
Yes.
With the diagnostic, period.
Which will cost about fifty thousand, right? Where's the fifty thousand coming from?
No, no, it's ninety thousand dollars for option A, which includes the diagnostic. That's it.
Exactly.
Versus six percent, which is sixty-six thousand, which does not include the diagnostic.
Yes.
And that would cost an additional fifty thousand. So by taking the eight percent, you're really going under the hundred and eleven thousand and down to ninety thousand, if my math is correct.
So then Commissioner Poppins would have to modify his proposal and he has to choose between one of the two.
I would wish for him to withdraw the motion.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes?
So I think what I'm hearing is that it's the six percent or it's the eight-point-one percent. So what passed was the six percent.
Correct.
So I, I don't know that there's consensus for what you're proposing in your motion.
I would ask you.
I don't disagree with that.
I would ask you to withdraw your motion, Commissioner.
I will gladly withdraw the motion.
Okay. Madam Chair, to move this thing along, I would, I would move that we would adopt the eight-point-one percent, uh, option for our employees, which includes the diagnostic for ninety thousand dollars.
Thank you. Is there a second?
For discussion, I will second the motion.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Poppins, you wanted to second it for discussion, so what else would you like to say?
Uh, sorry, say that again?
Well, you seconded it for further discussion, so is there anything else you'd like to say about the motion?
I will, I will not be supporting it because I do think that there are half the employees that, by the survey, indicated that they were not interested in making that change. And I don't want the, there to be hardship for those individuals either, so I would not be supporting it. Thank you.
All right. Well, with that then, Sherri, we call the motion.
Commissioner Aaron's?
No.
Commissioner Poppins?
No.
Commissioner Gibbon?
No.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. All right, so we're sticking with what we had.
Got it. Thank you.
Now that we got that figured out. Thank you. Move on to item number five on our agenda.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, uh, we had, uh, four inspections, bridge inspections, uh, done this year. Uh, this is our off year. But we had two, two of them. Uh, one is going to be for, uh, the replacement structure that we had completed this year, uh, bridge replaced. And then the other one is, uh, another structure that we were applying for a preservation grant. So the first one, I, I just want to tell you about the first one, which is forty-two, two oh, oh twenty, two oh one. Uh, that structure is located on County Road one oh five, just over three miles south of Highway eighteen. So this is a structure that, that's got some significant, uh, wearing and damage on the bearings units underneath. A lot of work going to be done to it, but we did get a preservation grant. Uh, the reason we inspected that again this year is just to ensure that nothing else was, uh, falling apart worse on that one or deteriorating. Uh, the next one, uh, I want to talk about, I'll, I'll go with one eighty, uh, oh sixty-nine. That'll be this one. This is a, this is a project that, uh, this was our bridge project for this year. Um, again, we had it, uh, replaced with triple set of pipe. So basically, they got to do a final inspection once it's complete. This is located on four hundred and eighty-second Avenue, I believe, uh, up in, uh, Dayton Township. Uh, this structure, we did have a cost share with Dayton Township, uh, to replace this structure. So, again, uh, I wanted to kind of go through to show you what the final results of this is or what, what the final product looked like after this, this structure replacement. So. Any questions on that one? Oh, oh, I think I just closed it out. So I have, uh, there you go. Thank you, Carter. Uh, the next structure I have is forty-two, one sixty, oh four four. Uh, this structure was not a structure before. It was just a large structure for us. This is on County Road one thirty-five. This is the, uh, these are the outlet pipes for Lake Alvin. Um, we went up and, uh, we had Dimego up there and measure these, uh, pipe. And they, they fall within the parameters, be considered a structure. So, uh, had to go up, have an inspection done on these pipe. And these will be added to our bridge inventory system. Again, some of the, the pictures, again, they're just. Again, some of the, the pictures, again, they're just, you know, showing inlet, outlet, road, and then they do have some, some inside pictures of the pipe. Um, there is some corrosion and, um, there's some damage inside these pipe. But again, for, for overall, they're in pretty decent shape. It might be several years before we can actually get money from the big grant. Uh, so this structure would be eligible for a grant, but, um, at least it's on the system, so we can, so we can do that. Uh, the next structure I have, this is forty-two, one-thirty-two, one-ten. So, this here is a unique structure. Uh, this is on a, on, uh, two-seventy-ninth Street, uh, north and west of Canton. This structure was a township structure. This is a Dayton Township structure. Um, and originally, there were two, two seven-foot pipe, I believe is what it was. Uh, and they had, uh, significant damage from the twenty-nineteen flooding. Dayton Township has worked with FEMA, um, did a lot of engineering on this, uh, did H and H, and determined it needed to be upsized. So they, FEMA approved it all, Dayton Township proceeded with the project. So, what went in here is three-seven footers. Three-seven footers with the, half the distance of diameter of the pipe between them. Um, it's long enough to be a, be a structure. So this here is another, another structure that we inherited back from, uh, Dayton Township. Again, it'll be on our bridge inventory system. So, uh, I will say on this one, I think it was back in eighty-nine, I think, there was a bridge there, uh, and I think the county went in back then, I think, and tore it out and put in two pipe, and then, so it, we got removed from the system, so... So, again, we'll have, uh, two additional structures that we'll be adding to inventory this year, so... Just a heads up, I know next year, uh, in twenty-two, we'll be having the, uh, full inspection done on the rest of our bridges, so...
Terry, question for you. Uh, we have, uh, recently closed a bridge about twelve miles south of Highway eighteen. I've been out there, took a look at it. I could see that people are pushing the, pushing the road closed signs to the side, they're driving around it. I encourage the public to not do that. I understand the pressure during harvest season, though. Where do we stand with that bridge?
Uh, currently, that structure is still closed. I think we're going to wait, uh, I would like to wait till at least the pipeline folks are out of there. Um, then we'll reevaluate it again. I think we're going to, it's probably going to remain closed until we do, uh, bridge inspections next year. Um, and then we'll reevaluate. So currently, that one is, uh, is it six-ten, six-twelve, six-ten, I think, six-ton, twelve-ton? Ten-ton? I know, talking with I-MAG, they think that probably going to be a flat three-ton maybe, maybe five-ton. So, the damage that was done on it i- is probably significant damage, but, um, it possibly would be able to be opened again, uh, just at a, just at a lower, be restricted lower, so...
Have we, you know, so, I think you get competing pressure from the public on bridges, right? One part says, "Don't open that thing because somebody could drive over it and fall in." The other competing pressure, obviously, is the community who wants to open it back up again so they can move goods to and from their farms and fields to market. They can get to church, they can get to work, et cetera. Just so the public knows, I've been out there, there's maybe one or two houses that sit on that road. And there's no houses that sit on the southern side of the bridge, uh, they're all on the northern side. So they, they do have access outlets. But, um, if we go this route of inspecting it and then limiting, uh, the, uh, the weight limit, does that still pose a safety threat, you know, in term, shouldn't say safety threat, I should say, uh... Is there a safety concern there in case, uh, somebody drive a combine over it? A- and I know I'm, maybe it's an unfair question because I'm asking you to speculate, but I think the larger point I'm trying to get at here is, when we have the issue that we do with that bridge, do we just close it down or do we put a weight limit on it? What's your guidance on that?
Again, that's all determined through the inspection, and then they run it through a program to, as far as, uh, to determine what damage has been done. Run it through a program and then that determines, and then that'll spit out a result of it needs to be at this weight restriction.
Okay.
You know, so, um, on that one, you know, we can't, you know, we have a hundred and fifty of these bridges, and, and probably a hundred of them, well, probably it's thirty or forty, forty of them, fifty of them, have restrictions.
Okay.
Um, recently had a conversation with, with somebody from the public, asking the same thing. You know, how do you keep people off of these? Well, we can't, you know? I mean, the only way I can find out if somebody is going over it that's overweight is if a neighbor turns them in. You know, because I, if, if we have sixty of them out there, we don't have the manpower to be going out and policing every one of these structures.
Absolutely.
You know, so, so we got to have some accountability from the public, you know, them holding each other, you know, responsible, um, for this. Uh, which we had on this one here, that, I mean, this is a great, a great example. You know, we had the local residents down there saying, hey, they're crossing with this, crossing, 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 the pipeline folks are, you know? But I know we went outside, had, uh, Sheriff's Department, went outside to cameras up down there and, and we found some farmers crossing it too, you know? But, uh-
There were equal opportunity offenders, weren't there?
Yeah, but, but, you know, I, I would say, I would probably say this, you know, that, that restriction has been on that bridge, the same restriction for probably six years, eight years maybe, if we go back. So I believe, I believe the local residents down there, the farmers, have been doing a due diligence of, of staying off of, you know, not going across with loaded loads. I mean, they might run a, run an empty grain truck across it, you know, but, um, because altho- otherwise, we'd be, we'd be noticing, you know, some more damage every, every two years when we do inspections.
And you said I-MAG will be doing those inspections, uh, early next year?
Yeah, I'm guessing probably May,
Okay.
when they might start.
Okay.
So, I will, I will say that that structure that is closed, um, we do have a verbal agreement with Pleasant Township, uh, we were going to do a cost share with them on this structure, uh, to replace it. Uh, but again, you know, with budgetary constraints, you know, we were looking at possibly in twenty-three to do that, but again, I don't, I don't know if we'll be able to do that now. Again, so that structure is small enough, uh, so the one that, the one that we had done are this year ourselves, uh, up in Dayton Township, um, that was a bridge similar to that one down there. And, you know, we're thinking, I mean, we could be fairly cost-effective just throwing in some large pipe. You know, just like we did up there. I mean, it's probably half the cost of, of doing like a box cover or something, so...
Thank you.
The pipeline, is it affecting, uh, other bridges down there as well, or how, how is completion coming?
So, uh, this bridge is closed, um, if you go a mile north, we have another structure that's limited. Uh, I believe that one's eighteen-thirty maybe, eighteen-thirty-four, eighteen-twenty-seven. They've been crossing that one, been going out trying to catch them. I just can't get out there when they cross. We have another structure from this, where this structure is closed, if you go about two miles south, we have another structure down there, and that one is like a twelve, twelve-sixteen, ten-sixteen. And, and, again, heard, heard from neighbors down there that they've been crossing that one too. And I, I've got many emails back and forth with, uh, Northern Natural Gas about, if I continue to hear about this, I'm closing it. And then you can go around for everything, so...
Thank you, Terry.
That it? Good.
Go ahead and move on to item six on our agenda. Replat of the twenty acres out by the highway shop.
So, the reason that this is on the agenda is we've had the plat brought up a couple times and then tabled or whatnot, we haven't just done anything with it. So I put it on the agenda to get discussion, to see where we wanted to go with it. If we want to just hold off, what do we want to do?
My, I guess recollection was that we were going to have it replatted into two parcels.
Right, and then have an eligibility on each one?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, I just wanted, wanted to just get clarification on that before I had them do another plat and then come back with something wrong on it.
That was my understanding. Anybody think differently?
That's correct.
All right. Then if that answers that question, we'll move on to item seven on our agenda, which is a hundred and fifty-three acres of T.
Madam Chair, do, and my apologies, do we need to take action on that, or did we?
I think we'll-
Do we need to take ca- commission action on that or not?
I think we'll just approve the claim for the replat fee would be an issue, and then we'll have to look at the actual replat
Very well.
and approve that. Fair, Bill? Okay. So then we'll move on to item seven on our agenda, which, uh, is a discussion and board action regarding the hundred and fifty-three acres in T that's been surplus. Sherri, what's, is there a question?
Um, I had put a question on there from the Realtor, um, I talked to Commissioner Poppins, and we wanted to do some more discussion regarding the hundred and fifty-three acres, what the intent is with it. We have started with Sioux Falls NIA to list it.
Correct.
But it hasn't moved any further, so, I guess I-
Madam Chair, I can provide some updates
Go ahead.
as well, Madam Auditor. Uh, Marcus Malin, who this commission already approved to, uh, represent the county, uh, and serve as our Realtor, uh, or as our commercial real estate agent. He and I met, um, a couple weeks ago probably, and he wanted to get, express or communicate, um, what he thought about the possibility of, you know, creating, uh, multiple parcels out there. And specifically, what he was, the discussion that he and I had was, he felt that there may be concerns about marketability with regard to the southern portion of the land, uh, because it's, uh, highly undesirable, we'll just call it, it, it's not prime time, uh, land ready for sale. So what he suggested, I think, and, um, if we want to hear from Marcus, if we want to repost this to another agenda and have him come in and talk about it, that's fine. But I did tell him I would at least, um, have the discussion with the commission and public about it, is that essentially, um, the discussion was, we split the parcel in two, into two different pieces of ground. And that would allow him to market the northern portion of the ground, uh, which is, in his estimation, I think in a lot of people's estimation, highly desirable piece of ground for a commercial sale. But, uh, he thinks there could be some concerns with the southern portion of the ground, and that's why we need, may need to cut it into two different parcels.
Do you want to just get him on the agenda so that we can ask questions and maybe he can show us a photo or two of what he's thinking?
I, I think we-
So that we have some options to look at?
I think we should. I, I think we put him on for, you know, December seventh, our next meeting. Try to work with his office to get him here. But, uh, he seemed to think that, uh, and I concur with him, the northern part of the ground is highly desirable right now.
Well, doesn't it have sewer and water now from, from T?
Well, if it doesn't, it will shortly.
It will shortly, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, well, yeah, let's do that.
Yeah, let's do it, let's get him on the agenda and let's have him come down, make a presentation about it.
And I would say, check with him before you say December seventh, to make sure it works on his calendar with the holidays and such.
For clarity.
Go ahead.
So, the discussion of the trying to split this parcel up also encompasses a discussion that we've had, and I would like us to pursue that by directing Mr. Golden to contact, uh, the, uh, City of T if they have desire of acquiring some of the area, which we unfortunately did not pursue at retaining for, uh, water retention on Nine Mile Creek. Uh, T has indicated, uh, to myself, uh, that they would have some interest. I would like us to direct, um, uh, Mr. Golden to contact them, try to work through the, the idea if they are interested in how we would make that transfer.
All right, and he's heard every word you have said and he's writing it down.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Poppins. So we'll do that and, um, look forward to some further updates on that. Move on to item eight, Sherri, on the fan, uh, that you're managing.
Okay, so I have, oh, that's going to swell. I've got, what is it, nine, ten people? This is the list of people that have accepted to be on the Financial Action Network. They all seem really excited about it, I'm excited to work through it with them. And then I did put on their, the questions that we were going to ask them and the project charter. Um, what I'm looking at for a timeline is three meetings in December, and it sounds like there may be some conflicts with some people, so I might push it into the third meeting in January. Um, but my goal will be to have the report back to the commission by the second week in February. It'll be presented in public meeting on the second week of February.
All right.
Madam Auditor, uh, those, are those meetings, uh, open for the public?
The meetings that the, where the fan gets together, no, they are not. They're like a working session for them.
I think when we discussed this, didn't we talk about, before we took the vote, we talked about how the meetings were going to be in public?
We didn't take a vote, um, this is a separate deal set up through me and, uh, board members. After discussing it with other people that have been through this fan project, it's not a public meeting setting. They're just reviewing the financials.
My, in my understanding, and I, I, I remember the conversation that we had here with, about having the open meetings, is this is something Sherri's doing within her own office and bringing a report to us, um, with the help of these people that have been kind enough to volunteer to look at the books.
Yeah, I just think it'd be helpful to have public meetings and create transparency and creates greater trust and confidence in the process and, and if these are great ideas and, and, uh, people are having public meetings, we ought, or having meetings, uh, with the general public, creates more trust and confidence in the process.
All of the other, uh, meetings, Commissioner, that has been done by the City of Sioux Falls, by the Minnehaw County, uh, and by the Sioux Falls School District were conducted in this similar fashion where these individuals were private citizens to come in and do an evaluation. Prior to, and finished with the evaluations, they will have full disclosure of what they find and what their recommendations are. And I think that, uh, you know, they're not in a, they're not in a public thing, they're doing this strictly on their own time. So I'm not saying that, you know, we, we can say it's full disclosure and all that, but they will come out with that when they have their final discussion. So in order for them to participate in that, if they want to, uh, I, I don't know. I don't know, we always told them that there would be a final report that would be to the public, but they would have the ability just to talk amongst themselves. And that's what has been done on all of these, uh, certain, all these budget evaluations that have been done in the past.
And it was my miscommunication to say that there'd be open meetings, I didn't look fully into the fan, how it was set up, and the people that I've talked to that have been part of other fan committees, it, the, the meetings that we're having is basically a luncheon. We get together, hey, do you need any more information, and then they take it from there. It's not a open discussion forum until we come to the final report.
So the report will be presented publicly and obviously anybody, um, that has questions about that would be able to ask questions, um, regarding the report. I've seen a couple of these presentations and they're quite interesting.
And we are no way bound to it, correct? This is just-
No, it's, it's, it's more like a report card with maybe some suggestions on things we could do that we're not doing. Just giving us some worldly advice from the public sector after they've reviewed the books, um, in somewhat doubt.
Because I think one of the questions that's asked is whether or not taxes should be raised, correct? And if there is going to be a discussion among high net worth people, who I think were some of the people recruited for this, if they're suggesting that taxes should be raised or increased, I think the general public would like to know how that decision was, uh, arrived at.
Where did we, I don't know, Sherri, but I don't know that in the past, any of these have ever come up with talking about the, whether taxes are increased. They're evaluating the amount of money you have, they, uh, they go over how you spend your money, how- They, they go over how you spend your money, how you do your budgeting process, all of that kinda stuff. I don't know that they come out with recommendations for tax increase. I'm quoting what the Minnehaw County had. And they had some adjustments in the way they went about their budgeting process, the way they put allocated funds. But they weren't talking about any tax increase, because that, to me, is a little bit beyond their purview.
Well, that was included on the information sheet, though. I think that Sherry sent around.
Just so that I can answer the question, I did put in there, is there gonna be the opportunity, well, with the projects that we have facing us, is there going to be a need for increased revenue or cut services? So yes, that was part of the questions.
I saw that.
It will also be explained if they feel that there needs to be increased taxes, because we obviously, if it has to happen, or if they think it has to happen based on their professional experience, then they would have a reason as to why it is. These are the questions that I put out to the FAN group, or will be putting out to the FAN group.
Did our county to the north have any representation from the agricultural sector on their committee? I mean, we have a lot of taxpayers here that are farmers, they're gonna come to me.
Well, the whole idea, we're not, we're not getting into whether, all these estimates. What we want is by the business community, these professionals that are accountants, leaders of businesses, to evaluate a budget, that's all. You could certainly put somebody on there, Commissioner Gibbons, but this is, an intent is not to get too far in the weeds. It's merely taking very highly professional people that deal with money on a large scale and offer an evaluation on Lincoln County's budget, that's all. I mean, they're doing this. We're not gonna, we're not gonna, if they come out and they have suggestions, I mean, I thought this was going to be a tremendous asset for us when we do our budget, not on if we have this section represented, or if we have this. This is information that we're trying to get to be better stewards of the money that we have. And we're asking a group of professionals to help us, give us some suggestions that they may have on how we go about it, that's all.
But we're also asking them if we should cut services or increase revenues. That's right there on the screen there, questions for FAN to answer. So I think, Commissioner Schmidt, I mean, I, I agree with you, Commissioner Schmidt, that the way that you're presenting it is the way that it should go. But what we're hearing from the auditor is she's gonna be asking people whether to increase taxes or cut services. And it's a very select group of people who basically are high net worth folks, who are gonna be asked to weigh in on whether we should cut services or increase revenues. That's why at the last meeting, I talked about, well, shouldn't we have somebody from small business on there? Commissioner Gibbons talked about, shouldn't we have somebody from the ag sector? It's an inappropriate question to ask the group then if there's not gonna be public transparency.
Well, to me, we've made, we've made a, we've made a nice process that Minnehaw County has used to their success. We've used the same process for the City of Sioux Falls, which has been very successful. We've used the same process that I think the Harrisburg School District has, I think Mr. Holbeck has gone through that, and the Sioux Falls School District. And this is the process that they used. They didn't get off on any tangents. This is what they prescribed, this is what they used. They got the report back, and then what they did with it was up to the people that was presented to it. So I don't know if some of these people wanna, that they're, they're looking at strategically changing how we go about this. I just thought we were gonna be evaluating, we were gonna get a report back on how much money we get, how we spend it, how we go about it, how we should go about a different direction. I mean, I don't know. I looked at those, and I don't know if some of these people, if you wanna make it a public situation, whether they would even volunteer for that. But I don't know, 'cause we were, I told them, or one, one or two that I asked, that this would just be a series of three meetings, and they would come back, and then they'd give a report to the county on what they observed.
Thank you for the update, Sherry. We're gonna move on to item nine on our agenda, the beverage license renewal.
So this is for landlord, I've talked to the sheriff, there's been no complaints.
Need a motion, Madam Chair?
I do need a motion. Can we do this, we can do, is this just one?
Just one.
Yep.
Move for approval, Madam Chair.
Thank you, is there a second?
Where's this?
I'll second that one.
Thank you, any further discussion?
Where's this exact location again?
This is in Beersford.
Okay.
On 46.
Got a motion and a second? Sherry, you call the roll.
Commissioner Ernst?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
We'll move on to item 10 on our agenda.
So we just need this resolution apparently to, for the FAA's bid protest procedures. It looks like it's, Sean has talked to, what's her, Brooke.
So you just need a motion on that?
Yep.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you, Sherry, you call the roll.
Commissioner Ernst?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
We'll move on to item 11 on our regular agenda.
I don't even know, did Julia put it on there?
It's Highway Department negotiations.
What I'm asking for is a member of the commission, or two, to be part of the negotiation teams in order to negotiate with the Highway Department and the union that is being formed. The information we have is that the, where we're at in the process at this point in time is that they're gonna form a bargaining unit. The next step in the process will be, is that we enter into negotiations contractually with them. So that's a request at this point, is I'm asking somebody from the commission to be part of that, at least one, if not two.
Who do you want? I don't know if anybody's gonna volunteer, Bill.
I, I am more than happy for anyone who wants to volunteer or to go through the process. I can tell you that when we did this with the Sheriff's Department, it was actually very amicable. It was not something that was highly contentious. It is not my bargaining style to go in there and try to grind somebody down or to make it a difficult process. I think there are plenty of contracts between the other counties and our unions for the Highway Department around the state that we're, we're gonna start with, at least from our side. So I don't think we're reinventing the will. I am hoping that the process is something that we can go in and build a good relationship and a good rapport, and when everybody walks out, they'll feel like they have a fair deal. So, that's what I'm hoping we're going to accomplish, and it's gonna be a very positive experience. Have I done enough to sell anybody I'm wanting to jump on board?
Bill, a question I have is, has the bargaining unit been formed? Or are they still in the formation process?
They are, they're at the point now where they have basically 100% buy-in for the union, so we did not oppose, we're not opposing the union at this point. So there won't be an election because, for that reason. So we want to start off on the right foot with them. So it, we're just waiting on the letter from the Department of Labor that the unit has been formed. There has been some negotiations, there are some issues that we need to resolve. We had no problems, it was easy to work with them. I think everybody was happy with the end result after we had a conversation. So everything's been stipulated to at this point.
Are they an official bargaining unit at this point, though? Or they still have to get approval from the Department of Labor?
We will get a letter from the Department of Labor saying that it's all been stipulated to. I don't expect there to be any, we're just waiting for basically the final letter to come. But there are no outstanding issues that we don't agree upon.
Thank you. I'll certainly volunteer for it.
Bill, I'll volunteer. I've been on a bargaining team before.
Unless you have any strong objections either way.
Nope, I, I am happy to work with any of the commissioners, so.
Now's your chance.
All right. Anything else for us today?
No.
All right, with that, I'd consider a motion to adjourn.
Julia's back, does she have something?
I don't know.
We'd like a short executive session.
Oh, you would?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved.
For what? For employment issues.
On, on one issue?
So, we would, I'd ask for motion under SDCL 125-2, sub 1, and sub 4.
So moved for executive session, Madam Chair?
Second.
Thank you. Sherry, you call the roll, please.
Ms. Scherr?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins? Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Commissioner Poppins, you gonna join us?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Ernst?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. You consider a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Sherry. Commissioner Ernst?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. We're adjourned.